Let's call this meeting of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners. Today, Monday, June 18th, the order please. Let's register our attendance. Fifteen present, one absence. We'll have the prayer by Commissioner Val and a pledge by Commissioner Warfield.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the many blessings that you send to us. Lord, we thank you most of all for our salvation. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve our citizens, our county. Please forgive us of our sins. Forgive us, Lord, where we failed. God is Father, and the decisions you would have us to make were pleasing to you. We pray, Father, that you be with the Jaeger family tonight. We pray that you send a comforting spirit to them, Lord. Remind them that even during the dark times, that you're still present. Be with us during this meeting. We'll never forget to give you honor and presence in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's saddening to talk about Jay's wife passed away Friday unexpectedly. He won't be with us tonight. And anything that he would have to take up, we'll postpone that until next month. We really appreciate your prayers. Jay does. Thank you. Commissioner Emmett?
Yeah, thank you Chairman. Along the lines of Mr. Jaeger, they're having their receiving friends, but they're actually doing it in Johnson City. And it'd be Unicoi County. It's the Unicoi Funeral Home. And it'll be Thursday, and they'll start receiving friends from 12 to 1:00, and then the service starts at 1:00 right after that. So it won't be here in Hollygambell or Jones or anything like that, but it'll actually be in Johnson City or Unicoi County. So thank you. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Commissioner Emmett for everything you've done this weekend for Jay. One of the things that Jay asked is that his wife was a big supporter of Millie's Wings. So in lieu of flowers or any other donations, please make them to Millie's Wings. And when David Herb comes up, he can give the address. Thank you. Next, we have appearance of citizens.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ronnie Basden. I'm the Executive Director of Girls Incorporated of the Tennessee Valley. And I wanted to come and present a new expansion program that we are actually starting in the Braceville community. Girls Inc. has long been in Anderson County since 1978. We run after-school sports and summer camp programs. A couple of years ago, we started administering an outreach program in Braceville Elementary. So we would take the program that we run that's in, we have a center in Oak Ridge. We took that program and kind of picked it up and brought it to the Braceville community. We had enough funding to do one day a week, and we served about 45 girls a day on that one day we were there. We introduced the girls to STEM work. We do a lot with economic literacy. We do a lot with setting goals and looking at college attainment. Our big mission with girls is that they grow up to be healthy, educated, and independent. In the two years that we've been in Braceville, we see a huge need for additional services. We see the girls that we've had the opportunity to work with that could really use additional days. They can use that mentoring relationship. They can use that girl-only environment, even if it's for a couple hours after school each day, to build each other up and to help empower each other, to help change the statistics that a lot of them face. So what we've decided to do, on a very limited nonprofit budget that we have, is extend this to a five-day-a-week program. So we've been talking with the Braceville School, Elementary School, and they are helping along with the Friendship Center that's in Braceville. They are helping us provide a free space so that we can administer this program after school. We're trying to partner with Second Harvest and other nonprofit agencies that can help us provide a dinner program for the girls. But really, my mission in coming here today is to let you know that this is an initiative that we are undertaking. We're very excited, and we know that there's a huge need for this. We hope that we can serve 60 girls a week in the after-school program. We would be running directly after school. We'll either remain in the school, or the girls can walk across the street to the community center. And then the girls will be picked up at about 6:30. So right now, I'm trying to kind of hit the pavement and garner support for our Braceville program. Really, we're just looking for those individuals that either want to volunteer, help donate, or just help spread the word that Girls Inc. is trying to bring more programming to Braceville. I have more information. If anybody would like me to leave that, I'm happy to. Or answer any questions, if there are any. That was easy. Thank you all. I appreciate it. Yes, I do.
Do I have anyone else for appearance of citizens?
Dave Conrad, Seven Wakeup Place in Clinton. My concern is about a resolution that was presented at Budget Meeting, Section 11 of that resolution states that any unencumbered balances will be returned to the General Fund at the end of the year. And as you know, the Senior Center functions on grants, state and federal, and donations. If our donors find out that their donations are going to be returned to the General Fund at the end of the year, they're not going to be donating. So I don't know what the solution to this issue is, but I believe that it is an issue. And any help that you can provide in that area and making sure that our donations carry over to the next year would be appreciated.
Questions? Any questions? Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Natalie, do you have an answer for him? Or do you want to answer it in Budget? Let's answer it now, if you can.
Any contributions that come from the public, whether, and I know for the Senior Center, we get donations for the Senior Center. We've also gotten some donations for them pursuing their 501(c)(3) status. Those donations, if they're not utilized by that operation through a budget amendment that comes through either Budget Committee or onto Commission, they are set aside and reserved. So for a little bit of background, the donations that the Senior Center collected went to help fund Cherie's increase in compensation. So some of those donations are going to that purpose. If there's anything left over, it is set in a reserve identified specifically for the Senior Center. And we've set up, like I said, a separate cost center. Anything utilized for their 501(c)(3) filing pursuit, it is also set separately. Same thing with animal control, any of the contributions that any operation might receive.
Is she good with that? Dave?
Dave?
It's not that I don't trust Natalie's word on it, but this document is something that apparently you all will approve, and it's written. I don't know that anything that Natalie just presented for us is written anywhere. But, so I don't know what has precedence and what takes. So I would like to hear that this resolution is going to be amended in some form to make sure that the statement that she just made is accurate. I know this is an election year, and you all may not be here next year, along with some of the rest of us, but, you know, things change. Interpretations change. So I'd like to see it specified in writing. Thanks.
If you can't take Natalie's word, you can't take nobody's.
That may be, but this is writing.
The Budget Committee, we never had any intention of taking any monies from the Senior Center. We never had any intention of that.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that you did.
You said that's what's written.
It is. It's written that it will go back.
The Budget Committee never had any intention of taking any monies from the Senior Center. Never. And just like Ms. Natalie said, whatever is left over, it goes into some kind of a code that's earmarked for that purpose, for the Senior Center. We've never had any intention of taking any of those contributions. Never. But I think some of it has been used for the salary. But that's part of the process. Still not satisfied?
You're the boss.
We're what?
You all are the bosses. You're running the county. I don't believe that it is proper to have something passed and that is stated that is not accurate or should not be proper.
It may be needed to be worded different, I don't know. But we've never had any intention of taking any money.
We could probably put a footnote of explanation there or something. Would that be possible?
I defer to the State or Jay in changing the language. That's the language that has been used in the resolution since before I got here. So, you know, I don't want to just arbitrarily change it without seeking the advice of someone.
I understand. Commissioner Fritz?
Of course, Jay would have to back this up, but there is laws and codes out there that says that if someone donates money for a particular item, whether it's the citizens, public, or whoever, that money has to be used for the purpose that it was donated for. We cannot take that money and use it for anything else. I mean, it is required to use it for that particular purpose, and you cannot use it for anything else. And there are laws that state that. So anything we do along these little resolutions to protect how we measure our other money does not apply to that because there are laws governing contributions.
Commissioner Mead?
Guys, what I thought, the Tennessee law, the way that it's written, I mean, for all kinds of things, it'll say, "This is absolutely prohibited," or "You have to do this." And then there's 20 sections of law that say how it's not quite like that. And so, under Tennessee law, it's very common. So it's not unusual to have something that sounds like it's going to cover something, but then other places in the law, it modifies and makes exceptions. And I guarantee you, this is one of those cases. There's a law, just like the one Mr. Fritz just referred to, that says if something is donated to a charitable organization by a guy, that money can't be used for anything else. And we have to abide by that too, regardless. But generally, across the county, all the other departments from throughout the county, if they have money left over, then generally, it goes back into the General Fund. But then there are exceptions to that. I think the library is one of the, the library has a similar exception. The money that's donated to library stuff, none of that goes back into the General Fund at the end of the year.
You watch us close.
Okay. Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, I'll change the subject just a little bit. I want to thank Ms. Basden for coming before us. I've been a longtime supporter of Girls Incorporated, and thank her for telling us the good things that she's doing in Braceville and for that community. And just want to thank her for that and ask her what we can do to help you.
Well, as discussion just money and donations are always helpful. But I think it's just getting county support for our initiative to expand into the Braceville community. We've been heavily located in Oak Ridge, and so this is brand-new to us to really expand out into the county more. I'm trying to get more invested in the county and to be out there a little bit more. So if you ever know of opportunities, or if there's a place for Girls Inc. to present or talk about what we're doing, that would be an enormous help. Yes.
Please keep us informed.
I will.
And let us know how we can help you.
I absolutely will. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Perhaps when our Law Director gets back to work, that we may be able to do a resolution of support from this Board of Commissioners.
That would be great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Approval and creation of agendas. Consent agenda. Motion and second, any discussion for approval consent agenda? All say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, regular agenda. Commissioner Meredith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move item 11, which is the Budget, up to 8A, please, after the Mayor's report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Fritz?
Mr. Chairman, under 6, make it 6A, I'd like to add to the agenda, a list from the purchasing agent, a list of surplus equipment that needs to be added. That CTS says it has to be approved by County Commissioner before it can be added to, listed as surplus or added to government deals to be gotten rid of. And so I'd like to add that as part of her report under 6A.
Have a motion. We have a second. Have a second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Commissioner Warfield?
I'd like to make 6B. I'd like to add to the agenda Brian Young to come forward and talk about the things he's been doing and the large amounts of savings that he's done for Anderson County. So you can inform the Commissioners and the public to make it 6B. So moved.
Second. Have a motion, second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other amendments to the regular agenda? We have a motion to approve the regular agenda as amended.
So moved.
Have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. First, we have Public hearing report. The Vice Chairman Warfield.
Read during the public hearing section, read the two resolutions. Sorry, in the back. During the public hearing session, I read the two resolutions that we're looking at, 18-6-697 and 698.
Have a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, purchasing report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. So purchasing only has four contracts to submit tonight for your approval. They've all been approved by the Law Director. Would you like to vote on them individually or as a group?
Move to approve as a group.
Have a motion, second, approve as a group. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And the Purchasing Committee approved to bring two other items to Commission tonight that are related to surplus property. As was mentioned by Commissioner Fritz, we recently been informed by CTS that County Commission approval is required to declare county-owned property surplus prior to its auction or sale. This requirement's not clearly stated in the law, and emails about that are included in your agenda. And this topic will be discussed at the next Finance Committee meeting, so a policy can be issued. But in the meantime, we're going to seek Commission approval before auctioning surplus property on gov deals. So the first surplus-related item is the request that County Commission approve to accept the list of surplus that we have already sold on gov deals so far this fiscal year.
Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, Commissioner Mead?
I just want to mention that I've been following some of these discussions, and this stuff just, we just suddenly auctioned it off. We have internal processes where it's, other people in the county get a chance. If they need it over there, if it's a chair, a desk, or paper, or whatever it is. And, I mean, they look for a place that it can be used before they get rid of things. And then when they do get rid of things, they make sure it's a fair auction kind of thing. Or it's quite often, it's donated to schools and nurseries and things like that. And stuff that the county has, also, the county school system gets a chance to look at almost all those things before we start actually selling things off.
Correct. We post all items.
It's a really good process, and we're just, and what we're doing now is just kind of, we've discovered that at least there's an opinion from CTS Legal that the Commission as a whole is supposed to approve anything that's given away or sold or disposed of. And so we're going to follow that until we, and we'll make the appropriate procedures and stuff to do that, and we'll get it figured out, and it'll be done right.
And yes, we do post all items first on the purchasing website for 10 days so other offices can have first dibs. And per Commissioner Scott's suggestion at the last Purchasing Committee meeting, then I'm also double-checking with Kelly Myers to make sure none of the items should go to the school, the teacher's depot. So the second surplus-related item is the request that County Commission approve the current list of items to be declared as surplus. And that list includes items already approved by Purchasing Committee and the list of computers that were approved to be added as new business items.
We have a motion and second. So what we're actually doing is we're voting on two separate items at once because we didn't take a full vote on the first. So we'll be voting on both. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, well, that's all the purchasing part of the agenda, unless there's any other purchasing-related questions. Thank you.
Brian?
Good evening, everyone. The IT Department has been, we've been very busy the last few weeks. We are rapidly approaching the switch-over from the Windstream trunk lines over to our AT&amp;T system that's been installed over the last, I guess, eight to nine months. It's taken a while for our vendors and the AT&amp;T. We've been using Broadway Electric as far as getting the fiber circuits put into these buildings. It's been an ongoing process all through this year and part of last year as we've brought these buildings up to speed. Across the entire county, there's been 13 properties that we've installed the circuits in that AT&amp;T has done the diligence to work with us hand-in-hand because we've had, these buildings are all in different states of connectivity. We, some just had modems and internet devices of that nature. Others barely had that. But overall, every single place that we went into, we had to go through and install a bunch of equipment and lines and hardware to make that happen. Now that that's been done, we're pretty much finished with the rollout of all of the actual hardware and equipment. AT&amp;T has provided, because I think, I think it's around 13,000, 14,000. I don't have the total, that we spent on the project getting the buildings equipped for this. But AT&amp;T, Ms. Angela Spain, our rep, has provided us with a $6,000 credit on our upcoming bills from them to help counterbalance some of the expenses that the county has paid to put these into the properties. So that helps wash some of that expense. Then moving forward with AT&amp;T, what we have in the new system is that we have been paying generally around 10,000 a month. And around February of 2017, Angela, my rep, and Tracy, we met with Natalie and Catherine and several others. And we got together, basically, we've caused a $3,000 reduction in the bill since February of 2017 forward. And I've provided paperwork on some of this that I'm discussing. You should be able to see those savings. But 3,000 a month over that period of time, I believe, was, if I have those not, let's see, that equals out to a $36,000 savings over the period of, as we look from '17 and '18, that Karen's added up for me. So we're already causing savings from just getting into editing all of these internet feeds that we have. So that's brought about a savings. We've got our credit. Then with AT&amp;T moving forward, not only will we be saving that monthly amount, but we're even reducing it further by switching to the AT&amp;T package. So that brings about a major savings. Then we get down to the Windstream portion of the billing. They were our former provider. That's where all of our phone systems and all of our data systems were coming in from. For the most part, there are some exceptions. But overall, that nearly 5,000 a month bill that we have been paying perpetually is, as of the 26 coming up, when I switch to AT&amp;T, we can completely eliminate that bill. It will totally go away. That's another $5,000 every single month that will just vanish. So that's good information. Let's see. And then, on our Comcast side of the equation, because we do work with Comcast as well as AT&amp;T for the redundancy, you don't want to put all of your internet in one location or your phones in one location. So we've sort of split the load between AT&amp;T and Comcast so that we don't have a hard failure with just one vendor or backhoe cuts through a line somewhere that we'd go down as a county. There has to be some redundancy built in. But in doing that with working with Comcast, which was really amazing that these two companies who are competitors were willing to work with us to achieve this product. So we literally have, it's a 50-50 blend of AT&amp;T and Comcast, where AT&amp;T is providing us the interconnectivity, where Comcast is providing us our bandwidth. So it works out as a good mix. But in doing that with Comcast, our bill was, I believe it was 3,700, I think Karen's got that, and we have now reduced it to 3,030. So even in the Comcast portion, we've caused a savings over that five-year term that equal up to 42,000. So all in all, the numbers that we've come up with, from Windstream being gone over this 5,000 contract, or five-year contract, that's 304,000, $269 back to the county, or that won't be being spent. Comcast is 42,000. AT&amp;T is 53,000. So as you can see, I don't have all of the math added up, but that's approaching well over 400,000 in savings that are realized and being realized as we speak. The 26th of this month, I will be switching this over with our vendors. So just wanted to report that to you. Also, we have been working, Catherine, in purchasing, and also with the schools as well, because we all purchase from some of the same vendors. We've been working with the vendors to try to reduce some of the line-item costs that are with our hardware and software purchases, which they've been doing. We've had some good success there. So just wanted to let you all know where the IT Department is at the moment, and that's pretty much it. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Scott?
Well, thank you very much. Brian, I just simply wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've more or less taken a box of shoestrings that was held together with Band-Aids and bubble gum, and you've made sense out of it. You've cleaned up a lot of the offices and the departments in the county, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. And I appreciate the departments. We've built a good rapport across the entire county. David and Robert now is with us too. We have gotten, we've basically got a good pulse. That was, you know, at first, we had some challenges because this was a whole new system that you all put in place. But it's working at this point. I'm getting very good feedback from every official and director that I work with. I can say across the board, I have zero issues with any of the systems we're running now, so.
Well, it's important that we stay on the electronic highway, that we're ahead.
Absolutely. We're Oak Ridge and Anderson County, Clinton. We should be.
But I appreciate it very much.
Commissioner Fritz?
I mean, I'm one of those people, very, very, very beginning many, many years ago, that was sort of reluctant about going with an IT person because I didn't know whether or not we could afford it. You're showing us, you're showing everyone of us that we can't afford not to have one.
And there's more to come. This is, we're starting to get into the meat of it, but I've got some more plans to save a little more money for us.
And so, I mean, just right here alone, just showing you that your savings is more than paying for the cost of your department. And it's just unreal, you know, by everybody going through you, everybody's working through one person instead of going off in different directions and different avenues and everything. And it's definitely a cost savings for the taxpayers. And I'm glad we've went that direction, and it's been a worthwhile adventure.
Any other questions or comments to Brian? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next is elections. The reappointment of Mary Jane Berry for second terms. The Regional Library Board term running from July 2018 through June 2021. Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, County Mayor. You have anything? Okay. With that, we move on to the Budget.
Good evening. So as usual, I would like to start with the regular business that we have, beginning with the cash and fund balance report. This is as of May 31st. So this is 11 through the 12 months of the fiscal year. The unassigned fund balance is $3.9 million. Note that it is still below the $4 million threshold requiring two-thirds vote on budget amendments drawing down the unassigned fund balance. The restricted fund balance is $1.2 million. The committed fund balance is $2.2 million. The assigned fund balance is $300,000. The assigned fund balance is $300,000. And the non-spendable fund balance remains at a little over $1 million, bringing our total fund balance reserves to $8.7 million. The cash fund balance continues to show a favorable trend as I've been reporting the last few months. As of the end of May, it's over $11 million compared to the previous years. Last year, it was 9.3 million, and the year prior to that, it was 10.2 million. There aren't any other notable changes on the other funds from their fund balance or cash. So if there aren't any questions, I'm going to move on to the graph. And these graphs are also as of May 2018. Again, the financial indicators continue to be favorable compared to the past years. There aren't any significant changes compared to the last few months when I reported out. You can see that cash peaked in March, and although it's favorable to the past four fiscal years, it's starting to be drawn down as we go forward until the next property tax levy. The revenue and expense trends are relatively flat. You'll see that there might be a slight increase in both the revenue and expense trends, and also the, the margin between the two is shrinking somewhat. But nonetheless, as of May, we are at a surplus with one month left to go in the fiscal year. And then also, the unassigned fund balance, where we are as of the, end of May, is roughly $127,000 above where we finished last fiscal year. So again, all favorable trends, one month left, so everything looks relatively good. Any questions on that part of the report? Moving on to the budget amendments. Group one was on the consent agenda. So group two appropriations, school, there are two seeking commission approval individually or as a group.
Have motion second, approval as a group? Go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Thank you. Group three transfers, school, there are three seeking commission's approval individually or as a group.
Have motion second as a group, all in favor of approval as a group, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go to the board and vote.
Group four appropriations, non-school, seeking commission's approval individually or as a group.
Have motion second as a group, all in favor as a group, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Board vote, please.
Go to the board and vote.
Group five transfers, non-school, these are all payroll or major line items, submitting for your approval individually or as a group.
Have motion second as a group, all in favor as a group, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Going to the miscellaneous section, these were also discussed at the Budget Committee. Seeking commission's approval individually or as a group, I'll be happy to discuss, provide background if you wish.
Have motion second as a group, all in favor as a group, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
And then lastly, group eight, I have three to add that were, I didn't have in time to go to Budget Committee. One was in the budget materials, and it was for Fund 263. It's a transfer to move $30 from office expense to communications. And then the other two, I submitted to you tonight, that if I may give you a little bit of background, number 82 is on behalf of the school fund to, it's a payroll transfer to make sure that funding is available as we finish the fiscal year for $684.54. And then also, just today, I got word from the auditors that for Fund 118, when we've been doing the operating transfers to move money into Fund 263 to help with its cash flow and its solvency, that we should have been drawing that from available funding. And in moving that fund from an enterprise fund to a special revenue fund, it may be operating at a deficit reserve. So this is basically getting that funding from the fringe benefit codes where there is funding available, rather than from a reserve where there may in fact be a deficit. Won't know until we finish the fiscal year. This is hopefully to alleviate the possibility of an audit finding. So seeking your approval individually or as a group for three, these three new budget amendments.
Have motion second as a group, all in favor as a group, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go to the board and vote.
And these require a three-quarter majority vote to pass.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. So that's all I have for the regular business. Moving on to the fun stuff. Okay, so the Budget Committee has been meeting many times over the last six months, and it has been in the commission packages with respect to the highlights. If I may, in proposing the budget for next fiscal year, I've got some summary comments that I'd like to make in starting the dialogue. I'm presenting the proposed budget for next fiscal year as approved by the Budget Committee. The proposed budget for next fiscal year addresses three critical financial issues that the county has been faced with over the past few years. Issue number one, unfunded capital needs. The Capital Projects Fund 171 is receiving eight and three-quarters pennies from the General Debt Service Fund 151 for one year. This is projected to generate $1.4 million in fund capital outlay needs across the county, which have not been previously funded. Issue number two, EMS ambulance fund. For the EMS ambulance fund 118, the operational deficit is offset by shifting one and a half pennies from the Industrial Development Reserve, which will allow EMS to operate at break even. The capital asset needs will be funded through the Capital Projects Fund, of which $800,000 has been designated for EMS capital. Issue number three is a self-insurance fund. Already approved by commission, the Self-Insurance Fund 263 restructured medical insurance benefits in an attempt to balance contributions with increasing claims and to alleviate the cash flow constraints in the absence of sufficient reserves. This proposed budget also provides for the following. It continues the current tax levy of $2.79 or .7903 cents for the next year, even though that allocation rate changes between funds. County employees may be eligible to receive an increase in compensation, $1,000 for those earning less than $40,000 a year, or $250 for those earning between $40,000 and $60,000 a year. The increase in compensation is being funded by shifting almost two pennies from the General Debt Service Fund 151 to the other funds, which is using one-time funding for a reoccurring expense. The General Fund 101 budget projects a deficit of $760,000. Because this fund's budget is not structurally balanced, it is further drawing down the unassigned fund balance, which is projected to be at 3.2 million at the end of next fiscal year. This proposed budget addresses three critical financial issues for the county. Other financial challenges continue over the longer term. So with the proposal of the budget, what is the will of commission?
I make the motion, we pass the budget as presented.
We have motion, we have second, we got discussion. Mayor Frank wants to speak. Oh, oh, I thought you had your hand up. Oh, okay. All right. So we have a proposal for Commissioner Fritz.
This right here, just putting it on the floor so we can talk about the budget.
Yes.
Okay. So, well, there's, there's a couple of things I just wanted to bring out since we are on the, where the citizens can hear what we're talking about and things. I know the new Circuit Court Clerk brought to my attention that the revenues in his department, because of the previous Circuit Court Clerks brought in some extra funding for special effort, and then balancing out the revenue things, his revenue is estimated over $100,000 more than what he will probably bring in, which means we're starting out, now, next year, $100,000 probably at the end of the year short than what he'll bring in. Then also, that's close to a penny on the tax rate there. And then, by us, I'm all for raises. I'm 100% giving people raises, but I'd like for the raises to be backed by recurring money. And by us funding raises this time, it's based on one-time money, which means we're starting in a hole for not this year, but next year, at a loss of, or two cents on a tax increase, which means, so, next year, and as we have a great influence of money coming into this county, which, and since I've been the commissioner back, going back to 2002, we have never had, we're looking at not this year, but next year, close to a three-cent tax increase, just for actions we're doing with this budget. So I just want to make sure that the citizens are aware that, even though this is a no-tax-increase budget this year, next year, by the actions we're doing with this budget, could possibly force a, up to a three-cent tax increase if we do nothing at all. We just have a regular, straight-through, no increase of any kind of next year, and just continue on with the same budget, you know, we're looking at a possibility of a three-cent tax increase. And I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that.
Any other discussion? Mr. Mead.
Yeah, Mr. Fritz, thank you very much. There's something I'm also a little concerned about. Using one-time money for an ongoing cost is always something you have to approach carefully. The other thing is, this is a chance to see how the economy goes. Oak Ridge is, I mean, I've been talking to realtors, because I have a daughter that moved back into town and is buying a house, so I've been talking to realtors, and they're telling me that houses are selling really quick. The house that my daughter bought, I mean, she had to put in a bid the day after it went on the market, then there was four people bidding on it. And so houses are selling, things are happening in the county, and I think it's not just in Oak Ridge, I think it's happening across the county. So if that kind of activity does pick up, like I think it might very well do, there would be no reason to have a tax increase next year. If it doesn't happen, then we'll have to face it then. But it's like I said in meetings before, this body, with the exception of a few things, can change almost anything in the next meeting if we need to. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion or comments? So the vote is to pass the new budget for the next year. Everybody understand? As presented.
Oh, I suppose, so there's also two resolutions, and I've given them to Kim. Right, the two resolutions, the tax levy and then the resolution for appropriation, that would need to be approved as well.
Okay, and three separate.
Separate?
Three separate. I think that's why we've done it for the last two years. Yeah. Any other questions? Let's go to the board and vote.
This is on the budget.
This is, this is for the future budget for the next year.
As presented.
As presented. Motion passes. Let the record reflect as one no vote and one absent.
So the first resolution. So the resolution making appropriation for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies, resolution number 18-6-695, it's been changed to reflect today's date. Submitting for your approval.
Have motion second, Commissioner Meredith. Okay. Does everybody understand we're voting on the resolution? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
And then the second resolution is Resolution fixing the tax levy. Again, it's at the same rate that it has been for the last several years, Resolution number 18-6-696, submitting for your approval.
Motion second, any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Mead.
And again, you'll be adding today's date to that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Well, I want to say one thing. For the eight years that I've been on this Board of Commissioners, this is the fastest, most thorough that I've seen. And thank you, Commissioner White, as being chairman of the Budget Committee. Thank you, Natalie. Thank you very much. Thank you to the mayor, you know, this Board of Commissioners. The continuity that we have now is unsurpassed. I want to say, no tax increase. So thank you very much. Me for me.
And it does mean we don't have to have the meeting Thursday night.
Or next Thursday.
Thank you, Natalie.
Okay. I guess next we have Human Resource and Risk Management by Kim Jeffers.
We're all a little bit better now. No worries. I want to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Annette was kind enough to add into your packets the 2017 Anderson County Government Benefits Financial Contract Report. That is a mouthful. Just going to take a moment and kind of brief you on some of it, not going to go over the entire thing. Of course, if you have questions, you can always ask. In 2017, the HR Department facilitated 18 employee benefits, in which we enrolled, submitted payment, reconciled, and facilitated resolution for an estimated 450 employees and their families. Among those 18 benefits, eight are supplemental employee-paid voluntary benefits, five are departmental budgeted self-billed benefits that includes dental and TCRS, which are employee, 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 employer paid. There are five budgeted employer and employee-paid benefits that run through Fund 263. The Thrive Health and Wellness Center, better known as the clinic, is included among those five within Fund 263. And since it remains a hot topic among the staff, I thought I would take a moment to kind of focus on the clinic, give you a brief update. Since March 2016 inception of the Thrive Health and Wellness Center through December 2017, the county and Fund 263 has seen a savings of $777,792. If we subtract the initial $120,000 contribution from the county for the build-out of the clinic, we are at $657,000. clinic, we are at $657,792 savings. Additionally, 87% of the employees and their families utilize the clinic, and those employees have realized a savings since inception of $111,575. That is money that the employee has been able to keep in their pocket. So I think that we can all agree that the clinic is a true asset to the county and the employees, and I want to personally say thank you to each of you and your role in helping putting this benefit in place, because I know it was a long process and it's greatly appreciated. Also, Fund 263 received rebates totaling over $98,000. $22,804 was from our stop-loss coverage carrier, and that was for being good stewards of our health and prescription benefits. And a lot of that, I feel like, is because of the correlation between the Finance Department, HR, the Board of Trustees, and all of the savings that we try to put in place along the way. There was also $75,292 in prescription rebates. So that's our savings for 2017. It is a six-page report, and it has a lot of information. Does anybody have any questions on anything?
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. So have you checked into the HSA plans?
That is something that we're working on for the upcoming year.
Okay.
That takes a little bit of time.
Sure, and I understand, but as I have taken on, you know, the HSA myself, I have found that I've saved a lot more money. I'm one that I don't tend to go to the doctor's office unless it's a real necessity, and as a result, I don't pay as much when it comes to my portion of the insurance, and I'm able to save a lot more as well that rolls over. It's an account that's my money, and it's going to be there for my own medical benefits in the future.
Yes, we're looking at that, as well as, you know, some people, if you get it when you're young enough, can utilize that as part of the retirement as well, the retirement benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you all very much.
Next, we have the Operations Committee report. By Commissioner Alderson.
Thank you, sir. If I'm motion made by Commissioner Alderson, wow. That's too much. If I'm motion made by Commissioner Alderson to forward to full commission for approval of a blanket bond for elected officials and all county officials in place of individual bonds to be in compliance with a change in the law of 2016. Motion second by Commissioner Scott, and I so move.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The only other thing, Mr. Chairman, was a motion made from Commissioner Scott and second by Commissioner Mead to forward to full commission for further discussion, and to the law director of favorite letter in support of a project which is Millie's Wings, and that was asked to be discussed during this meeting. For two or three minutes.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Chairman. As discussed on the Operations Committee in August, late August of 2015, myself and Natalie lost our youngest daughter, Amelia, due through some complications of her neurological disorder. Out of that horrific event in both of our lives, we had to make sense of it, and we decided that we would start a foundation, originally to put swing banks in all of the elementary schools in Anderson County. My daughter was non-ambulatory, and the only time that she was like all the other children was when she was in a swing. That had morphed to something much bigger, and we decided that we wanted to build the first all-inclusive playground. That foundation is called Millie's Wings. We are a 501(c)(3), and to date, we have raised $72,000. Fast forward a little bit, we ended up being in contact with the city of Clinton and the Parks Department. One of the individuals in there, Jason Brown, had said, have you met with Mrs. McNally? She has a similar goal and mission that she is trying to do, and this might be a potential partnership. So we did meet. We met actually out at the South Clinton Park, and I'm going to leave it, I'm going to give it to Christina. This is Christina McNally. Oh, by the way, David Herbert, 131 Orchard Road north. Apologize.
And I'm Christina McNally at 611 Riverbend Road in Clinton, and I want to thank you for letting us come here, because Millie's Wings and this inclusive park is so much of our heart, and I can't speak to their journey at all, but I do know that I want them to feel like they're not alone in it, and I want children like Amelia to know that they have deep value and purpose in this world. I said, I want to do this.
So fast forward, Christina had seen, actually, an inclusive park that was in Karnes that was with help from Lions Club, and Christina, who is a former Clinton elementary teacher, got so moved by it that she found a mission, or she got a calling, that this was going to be her mission to put the first all-inclusive park in Anderson County. So you understand why we were both standing here before you together.
And I don't have any connection to a special needs child, so I just, I did, I felt this pull in my heart that, like, I can't not consider these children that get neglected from play and joy. And so I did, I went to the city, and I cried on them, because I just couldn't contain my passion for this. And so they had to say yes, because they didn't know what else to say to me. But they had plans to renovate the South Clinton Park. It's 30 years old, and it's just falling apart. And so they told me they had $75,000 allocated, and if I wanted to raise the rest of the money, then they would support it. And they actually came to the Karnes Park and visited, and I think that their hearts were really touched as well. And they got to hear some stories of children that had never been able to experience play on a playground, and they could there, because this sort of park doesn't just have, like, a handicap swing, which is wonderful to give children something, but that still keeps children isolated. This gives children the opportunity to play and be with able-bodied children. So I met with the company that designed the Karnes Park, and they have a passion for this, and so they gave us a big discount, and they gave us a plan to get us going, and we have turf surfacing, which means it's safe for anyone that's blind, or in a walker, or in a wheelchair, or in a stroller. There's no sort of obstacle. And then we have some pieces of equipment that have points of entry for wheelchair children that can just maneuver over, because if you have older children that are in wheelchairs, weight becomes an issue. And then we have some specific equipment to help children with sensory disorders like autism or neonatal abstinence syndrome. We have a growing number of children with that in our county. And I think we have about 10,000 children in the county and 1,000 in the city limits, and nearly 20% of them are considered to have some sort of special need or a disability. So the need is there, and our project has really taken off. We're 75% funded, and we're just at the last stretch. We'd love to be fully funded this summer, so we can break ground in the fall and have this place open in 2019.
So the city of Clinton, actually with the monies that, at the time when they applied for the grant, we had about $50,000 in Millie's Wings and 75 from the city. They applied for the state matching grant. We have also garnered support from other organizations, local businesses, and have received, or in the process of receiving, several other grants as well. So we're here before you. I passed around some letters of support. You can see one from Lieutenant Governor Randy McNally. We've received letters of support from the Anderson County Chamber of Commerce, all of the school systems. What was discussed in operations was a letter of support that we could get from county commission. And as well, we wanted to talk a little bit about our last kind of fundraiser that we're doing right now. I passed around some, but we have a brick raiser campaign that we're doing right now, which families or businesses, this is kind of the form that you're looking at, can actually buy a brick, and this will be laid down as a paver walkway, which will be ADA compliant to go from the playground actually to the bathroom, which the bathroom is part of our renovation project. The total cost is going to be around $400,000. We have in-kind donations, money that has been pledged to us, as well as money in the bank right now. So again, to any support that you guys can give us in this project, we want to break ground in the spring, or actually break ground in the fall, have funding done by the summer, and then actually have the ribbon cutting in the spring.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. I'd appreciate if you would show the brick so that they'll be able to catch it on television, as well as your board, please.
And one of the benefits of with Millie's Wings and the city of Clinton joining up together is that the city of Clinton is eligible for grants that a 501(c)(3) is not, and likewise, same difference.
Get back closer towards the, turn it this way. You're okay? He's okay.
Millie's Wings is a 501(c)(3), so there are different corporate grants, which we have just recently received one from the Christopher Reeves Foundation for a glider for a $13,000 grant.
So what are you doing to reach out to the public apart from standing here with us tonight?
So Dr. Parrott actually had us in front of the school board not too long ago. We've talked several times. We've been on Wish. There are articles that are written in the newspaper. We, no, you go ahead.
We have a Facebook page called the South Clinton Inclusive Playground Initiative, and we have links for the brick fundraiser there, and we also highlight the business sponsors that have contributed. And we have more pictures that are more detailed, because since we've joined forces, we've actually been able to expand from these original pictures, and we're going to renovate the bathroom, and it's going to be a really special place.
And I think in South Clinton, too, it's a very central area to the county. This playground is going to be utilized, not only from, you know, the areas south of Clinton and Claxton, as well as the city of Clinton, as well as activities probably that will be utilized not only by all of the schools, but potentially even Emory Valley Center and the Early Learning Center over there as well. So we really think this is going to be a jewel in the county.
Are you going to be at the county fair?
Yes, we'll have a booth between the Clinton City Schools and the Anderson County Schools.
And your Facebook page, does that allow people to make contributions directly?
It has a link to Millie's Wings that you can contribute to directly.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Mr. Meredith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's the ultimate goal? How much are we trying to raise? To all in?
$400,000.
And we're at?
$350-ish.
$350-ish? Okay. Great. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to Anderson County Commission pass a letter of support signed by the chair, supporting this project to help them in their grant endeavor.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr., well, this is on the motion, and then we'll go back to Commissioner Emery.
We had discussed in operations the possibility of the county applying for a local park recreation grant, and the county attorney is checking into that. So that's a possibility that we could get another grant for Anderson County along with the one from the city of Clinton, and sort of join forces, so we'll be working on that with the county attorney.
We appreciate that one 100%. Thank you so much.
Any other discussion on the motion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Emery.
Thank you, Chairman. County commission got together and raised, we were going to buy something for Linda at the funeral, and Jay wanted that money, of course, to go to Millie's Wings. Nicole at Jay's office also would like, in light of that, nothing to do with the donation part, wants to do some kind of park bench in memory of Linda.
We've got the park bench donated.
Pardon?
We've already got a park bench donated from county commission.
No, this will be something else from Nicole, whether it be a tree, or a bent, anything, because Linda was really, she was really passionate about that, so just anything else that we can do on top of that, so, okay. So we'll touch base with Nicole and go there. Thank you, Chair.
And all the proceeds, everything that all the county commissioners have taken up so far is going to Millie's Wings. Commissioner Smallridge.
Just wondering, are you selling the individual blocks, or is there a contribution attached to each block?
Yes, the four-by-eight bricks are $100, and then the eight-by-eight bricks are $500, and so we get a large percentage of that after the brick cost is taken out. But I think it's going to be so special as you walk from the playground to the bathroom to see all the people in the community that came together to make this place special.
Any other discussion, comments? Thank you all very much. Next, old business. Do we have any old business coming forward to committee? New business. Commissioner Warfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, it's more of a request for an update on the grant for Andersonville Elementary for the crosswalks and the school zone flashing lights. I don't know, Natalie, do you know much about that?
Whatever you, whatever you.
Okay, Mayor?
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Okay, well, the last time that, when I emailed Robbie, he said that it's being put out for bids. That was the last that I heard, because, and the reason I'm bringing this up, you've got teachers coming back in probably 30 days, 30 to 40 days.
There's not going to be construction in 30 days, but the majority of the project is not on the school property. So where we're at is on Friday, June 15th, we got environmental approval, and we had to go back and get environmental approval again because the project changed. In fact, the flashing lights that the PTO actually wanted were not ever in the original grant proposal. And so when we ran into the issues with the title on two particular properties, we never could get clear title. We had to go back to the state, ask permission to reconfigure the project, and when we did that, that's when we actually added the crossing lights in there, so it was kind of a good thing. But right now, Greg Green is the architect engineer. He is sending the revised plans, the utility certifications, a copy of the bid advertisement, and the bid specs in the budget estimate to TDOT. So any day, we should have that approval, and then that will go to Catherine and go out to bid at that point in time. So they originally thought they could, and that's probably why Robbie said it's getting ready to go out to bid, but it needed that second environmental approval because of the change in the scope of the project.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other business coming forward to this Board of Commissioners? Have a motion second. Thank you very much for your time.